All right, we're going to start our meeting in one more minute, but it seems like we have a tradition around here this time of year. What the hell are they doing here? If you would all join me in wishing Ms. Gail DeCilio a happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Gail. Happy birthday to you.
Just want to let everybody else, everybody know that next year my son will be doing the meeting if it falls on the 27th.
Happy birthday to you, Michael.
Yes. Now, it's, yeah. Next year, believe me, if it's the 27th next year, I'm not coming.
We're going to make sure we vote on calendar.
Yeah.
Yes, we have a Thursday meeting this year.
Thank you.
Okay, the Stratford zoning commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Let be noted for the record that Ms. Manos would be sitting in for, as an alternate, for Commissioner Phillips, who has declared a conflict on this particular evening. Mr. Vacola is out absent this evening. He had pains in the back or something, so he's out sick. We will be running with four commissioners, although Mr. Vacola will review the tape, seeing he has sat in on the last, for three of the petitions this evening. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued at another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on January 12th and January 19th. These properties were duly posted on February 20th. Ms. Manos, if you could read the first petition on our agenda this evening.
236 Barnum Avenue, petition of Esteban D. La Cruz, seeking approval of liquor location to establish a Class G grocery beer permit in a C.A. zone.
Is the petitioner present? Please step forward.
This is the owner of this particular business. My name is Santiago Morales Jr. I'm helping him out with the--
Okay, can we have his name and address also for the record, both yours and his?
Okay. My address is 209 Hooker Road, Bridgewood, Connecticut, 06610. And his address is 1080 Ogden Street, Bridgewood, Connecticut, 06610.
And his full name and address?
Full name is, his name is Esteban De La Cruz. And his address is 1080 Ogden Street Extension, Bridgewood, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. And mailings?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, if you'd like to explain to us again what you would like to do there?
Well, he's trying to get a grocery beer permit for this particular location. And the stores, everything is all set up. They're applying for the Connecticut Lottery, they're waiting to get that, they have all the other licenses. And it's just this particular permit that they're waiting so they can proceed with their business, with this business.
Okay, any of the, this petition was denied, I think, three months ago?
Yeah, it started about three months ago, yes, for different reasons. And I think it's documented, documents were provided, refuting what the allegations were, if I may use that word.
Okay, so everything has been addressed and corrected?
Everything, there hasn't been any new changes, there hasn't been any problems. I'm sure that the town has been down there, I believe they took some photographs, he doesn't have them here right now, but I've been by there, there haven't been any problems as far as people hanging around, drinking, you know, loitering, there was an allegation about loitering, and that has not occurred, as far as I'm concerned, by what I've witnessed. And he can attest to that, too, it's just that I'm here because his English is not as good as it should be. Not, no, not as good as it can be, I should say.
Okay, we have any questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask you if you want us to hold off on voting on anything tonight, seeing we only have four commissioners here, and I think that requires four--
Sure, I mean--
All right, well, it would only require three affirmative votes, because it's not a special case. So, if you want to take the chance with the four, then we will vote on it tonight, if not, we can table it until next month.
I'll take a chance, and then he can always appeal again, right? Or is that final, after this, if you say no this time?
There would have to be something substantially different about the application, that's why this one was taken. There was some confusion about who was the applicant, and, you know, I think some of the issues that were arisen last night in the police department were involved with people who were assisting Mr. De La Cruz and not the actual applicant. And that's why we were able to have you come back prior to six months.
Okay, so, well, I have to, so you don't have a quorum, you say if you wait for next time, there'll be a full, you know, full--
We have a quorum, we can listen, we've already listened to what you have proposed to us.
Right.
But with only four, your chances of, you know, are limited or reduced, shall we say, to gaining the right amount of votes that you need to get passed, unless you want to wait until next month and--
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a recommendation, he may want to speak with his client just for a few minutes, and to explain to him what the scenario is, we can move on. And then I can check in just to see if they want to, I mean, it sounds like we're going to be closing the application tonight, and then I can get that message from them as to whether or not they would like to vote, or postpone to next month, if that's--
Can I just do it right here?
Well, we just want to like to move things along, so if that may take a few minutes, if you want to just, you know, recess, or you just want to go over into the hallway, you can explain to him, and then you can tell Jay off to decide.
All right.
Okay. Do I have anybody who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close. By Ms. Manos, second by Mr. Silhavy, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Mr. Silhavy, would you like to read the second, third, and fourth?
Okay, item two, text amendment petition of Rogalas LLC, seeking to amend the zoning regulations by creating a new section 32 titled Orin Oak Village District. Item three, 170 Orin Oak Lane and 1180 James Farm Road, petition of Rogalas LLC to seek to change the zone from an RS1 to the proposed Orin Oak Village District. Item four, 170 Orin Oak Lane and 1180 James Farm Road, petition of Rogalas LLC, seeking a site plan review to construct an affordable housing development of 25 single-family homes pursuant to section 8-30G of the Connecticut general statutes on property located in an RS1 zone. Sediment and erosion control application has also been submitted for review.
Okay, this is a continuation from last month. What I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up to the public, if there are anyone, is there anyone who'd like to speak who did not speak last month, and that will bring new testimony tonight, I will open the floor to them. So if anybody would like to speak in favor or against, please step forward, who did not speak last month.
My name is Alexiandra Lewis. I live right next to, I think it's Sadeski, I think that's how you say her name. I live on James Farm Road and 1160. I just purchased my property two years ago. And the reason that I moved there is because of the character of the area. So I'm really concerned of all this property that's going to be building behind my house. And I'm concerned about the water, how it's going to affect the water, the traffic, it's everything that plays along with the value of my property going down, if that happens.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else speaking in opposition, I will now turn that over to Mr. Cubic or Mr. Kelly, whoever wants to go first. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Senator.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Kelly of Kevin Kelly and Associates, 2505 Main Street, representing the town of Stratford. Tonight, the town has several experts. We have Tim Casey from STV Engineering, Renee Basulto from Robson Forensic, George Logan from Rema Ecological, and Sergeant Kevin Ablon from the Stratford Police Department. What we will demonstrate is that there are significant problems in various areas on this development. First, you will hear from Tim Casey, who looked at the engineering. And what you're going to find is first, that the data is insufficient in many areas to really draw the conclusions that were drawn, particularly with regards to discharge of water, also the emergency access. The sightlines along James Farm Road are also a problem, as STV did a traffic report, and you'll hear about that also. And pay particular attention to how they deal with stormwater management, and that all stormwater is going to be moved from the site to James Farm Road.
Good evening. My name is Tim Casey. I'm a senior engineer for STV Incorporated, Milford Consulting Firm. I've been with them for 40 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut and New York State. We reviewed the documents submitted on this proposal for the development of 1180 James Farm Road. And I handed out a packet which contains the engineering review of the proposed development. Then I have a packet of some photos and some drawings that show the site distance. And then finally, there's a review of the traffic study that was submitted. So the first is, is the review of the engineering documents, starting with the site plan. And I've noted some conflicts and concerns, and I'll quickly go through these. First off, on the site plan, Unit 12, which is at the back of the property, there's a retaining wall back there, and the retaining wall and the building itself are on the same line at some point, so I'm not sure what's happening there. The proposed buildings are three foot off the property line, which will require some sort of construction easement from the adjacent property in order to build it. There's another unit, Unit 23, which is located one foot off the curb line of the roadway that goes through the site, which is a concern for snowplow and safety. There was a number of callouts missing for sidewalks, curbing, pavement. You know, we're sort of guessing at what's being proposed, we assume the things look like a sidewalk, it is a sidewalk, but nothing is called out. There's nothing concerning streetlights in this proposal. There's no roadway geometry, there's no horizontal geometry or vertical geometry, so you're not quite sure what's, what's being proposed. And there's no, there's no template that shows the emergency vehicles can go through the site, through the roadways, and make the proper turns. There's a location up here where they have a mailbox coming off, and that's, that's just a, it's a bad place to have it, and we're concerned, a safety concern there, to have it so close to James Farm Road, and people coming back from, let's say, working from the day, and they got to park. There's, I don't think much thought went into that, there's better places to put that. And then the dumpsters are located here, which means, you know, whenever, whenever they're emptied, the truck is going to block the roadway, and people can't get in and can't get out. The next is the, is the grading and utility plan. You know, the big concern is here, is there's proposed sanitary sewer, there's also proposed water, and proposed gas, and proposed electric, and they do not specify how they're bringing those utilities to the site. So there's no, there's no water on James Farm Road in this area, so they would have to, similar to the sanitary sewer, they'd have to run down and follow the sanitary sewer on Orin Oak Road and tie into water at that location. Same thing with gas. And they don't, they sort of ignore that, they don't talk about it, they don't address it, they just show the utilities coming to James Farm Road and stopping. And the concern is there, is all this construction, in order to install those three utilities has to happen on James Farm Road, and in their reports, it's ignored. They also tie the drainage, all the drainage in the site catch basin's piping comes to James Farm Road, and they tie it into an existing catch basin, one existing catch basin, which they don't tell you anything about. They don't tell you what pipes are leaving that catch basin, where it goes, it just connects into that catch basin, there's no invert elevations with proposed pipes coming, or existing pipes coming out of that basin, so you don't know exactly what's happening. I'll speak to that again as we move along. There's a 12-inch sanitary sewer that feeds this development, and that's a very large sewer, which I think is too large, I think there's going to be velocity problems, and there's going to be, it's going to be a maintenance issue. The proposed drainage at the site, there, at some points, we checked a few points, at some points, there's only 12 inches of cover on the pipe, which is, it's completely inadequate. And there's, and there's no, there's no spot elevation, so it's, it's hard to tell where these houses are being, what elevation these houses are being constructed. Going back to the, to the forest main, so it's 1,500 liter feet of forest main, you'll have 1,500 liter feet of water, and same with gas, constructed on James Farm and Orin Oak, in order to complete this development. There is one note on the drawings that talks about energy dissipation, devices that outfalls, but they really don't talk about where the outfall is. What we determined is, we went out there and looked at the site, looked at the catch basin, and there's a pipe under James Farm Road, leading to the property on the west here, which is, I assume is private property, and there appears to be a wetlands down there. And ultimately, that's where all this discharge from the site will go. I took some pictures of that discharge, I'd like to just show you. So it's a 15-inch pipe, existing 15-inch pipe that goes under James Farm Road. This is, this is standing on the roadway, looking into the private property, and this is a 15-inch pipe. So the material there is all, it's all erodible material, it's, I don't think it's seeing much sheet flow, or flow from that basin, but the proposal is to take all the runoff from all, this whole site, dump it into this catch basin, and it comes out that discharge pipe, which you just saw, 15-inch pipe. And it will erode the material that's there, it will destroy the wetland, which is downstream from that. Again, there's no, there's no discussion about that in their report. And just to go through their, briefly through their design of the stormwater system, in their, in their engineering report, they talk about the existing site actually drains to the southeast corner, which is over here. But when you look at the contours of site, there is, there is a break line here, which I drew on a plan that I provided for you. So this plan is the, is the proposed developer's plan, which I indicated in color comments, and one was this break line. So with this break line, this part of the site existing goes to the east, the rest of it comes out to James Farm Road, but some of it comes through private property, comes out to James Farm Road. So it definitely does not all come to the site, the catch basin. When they, when they did the design, they assumed that all, this whole site does come to that one catch basin. So they said, okay, this is the quantity that's coming there now, so we only have to mitigate the proposed development, so you don't get any more than that. But that assumption or statement is wrong. So the site isn't all flowing to that point. And that's how they, that's how they designed their underground storm drainage system. And one of, one of the concerns with the design of that system, they assumed a certain infiltration rate, and there was no information, no subsurface information, on what the existing conditions are here, what the groundwater depth is, what the rock is, and they just assumed an infiltration rate, which they, 10 inches per hour, which is very high, so that's what they assumed is going to perk out of this system, and that's how they sized the system, which is, which is incorrect. And then the, the other issue is the sightline distance. So this is a blow-up of the proposed roadway coming out to James Farm Road. And the, we assume that they will remove the stone wall in front of their property and bring down that embankment, which is the existing condition to have out there now, so the ground is quite a bit higher than the roadway, plus you have the stone wall on top. So assuming that they're going to remove all that, where the roadway comes out, we still have a deficient sightline distance looking to the south. Assuming it's a 25 mile per hour roadway, which is what it's posted at, you need a sightline distance of 280 feet. So you need to be able to see 280 feet down James Farm Road, and you'll only see something like 120 feet, that's all you can see because of the stone wall and the trees that are beyond the developer's prospect. So in order to get the proper sightline distance, you'd have to get an easement to take down the wall, take down the embankment, and take down trees on private property. So the sightline distance I said you needed for 25 miles per hour is 280 feet, but we did get a memo from the police department saying that the average speed on James Farm Road is actually 38 miles per hour. So using that speed, you need a much greater sightline distance, you need 410 for a speed of 38 miles per hour. So instead of 410, they're providing 120. So it's, it's a serious concern, a serious situation, creating that intersection there. And it was, it was a significant concern for us when we reviewed it. And we, we also reviewed the traffic study. We have a licensed engineer, traffic engineer, who reviewed this, and that is the second report that I handed out. He had a lot of questions, there was a lot of information lacking in that report. They didn't, they didn't tell you what, what date their counts were taken, they didn't take any, they didn't give you any information on the vehicular turning movements. They used peak factors, certain peak factors for existing conditions, but then used different peak factors, peak hour factors for build, no build and build conditions. You know, the traffic volumes, traffic counts were taken three and a half years ago, and really after three years, you should be taking counts, again, take current counts to put a report together like this. In their, their traffic analysis, again, they used one version, one software program for existing conditions, and then when they looked at build and no build, they used a different program. And why, we don't know. But, but again, the major concern for the traffic is what we listed under construction phase. The construction phase, all the work that has to be done on James Farm Road in Orin Oak Road, was ignored in their study. So that should be, that should be something that's in their study, they review how they're going to put three utilities in this road, and what that's going to do to the, what the impact that's going to have on traffic. And again, that was, that was not included, and that was not discussed in their traffic And I think, I think I hit on most of the important items in our review of this proposed development, and I'd like to answer any questions you have regarding that.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Are you staying for the full presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so if they do have questions afterwards, we can call you back up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Casey leaves, I do have one question for him, that I would like to get on the-- that I would like to get on the record. I'm going to refer to the, to the map. And you see the subject parcel,
I think the mic can be removed, Ken.
And the subject parcel goes on the eastern side is parcel one. Then we have parcel two in the center. And to the western side, you have the Sikelsky property. Okay? They're doing most of their development in parcel two and the Sikelsky property. So my question for Mr. Casey is, as proposed, does the stormwater management system take all water from parcel two and the Sikelsky property of the subject property westerly towards James Farm Road?
Yes, yes, it does. It's a, you know, a pipe system, catch basins and storm drainage pipes. It's brought over to James Farm Road, it goes into a detention system, but then it's metered out of the detention system to James Farm Road, to that catch basin I discussed.
And Mr. Casey, that's 100% of the water on parcel two and the Sikelsky property?
Yes, it is.
Next, we will have Sergeant Kevin Albone from the Strafford Police Department, particularly the Traffic Division, who will talk about a study done by the Strafford Police Department with regards to traffic on James Farm Road.
All right, good evening. As with all study, all requests that come to the department, we just do a brief traffic study of the area, go over our traffic enforcement and traffic accidents over the past three With our traffic study, we use our stalker radar system. We left out for one week during the months of, or during the month of September 2018, with the dates of September 14th through September 20th. We observed over 9,000 cars. Within that data, we found the average speed is 36.8 miles per hour in a 25 mile-an-hour zone. Nearly 55% of the vehicles traveling on that road are traveling 32 to 41 miles per hour with a top speed of 78 miles per hour. As far as enforcement is concerned, we've been making an effort to increase that enforcement in that area over the past several years, over many complaints of speed in the area. The average complaint being made every three to four months. As far as our motor vehicle accidents are concerned, with these projects, we check usually the two main intersections, which have been James Farm and Orin Oak, in particular on this one. January 16th, or January 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2018, we had 12 crashes, 11 with no injuries, one with injury, no with fatalities. On Orin Oak Lane in particular, we had 19 crashes, 16 no injury, three with injury, and zero fatalities as well. Some other concerns we have from the area, just with the overview of the plan, was possible concerns for on-street parking or overflow parking, just with the amount of parking spaces that were in the plans. James Farm Road being so narrow, no shoulder, the set location for this project being on that blind corner definitely was a concern of ours. Emergency access, with only single access to the front and a wooded area in the backside. Us getting emergency access or possibly even the fire department and controlling any traffic hazards that would pose to us as trying to make an entry or gain access. And with that also being said, the width of the entrance being 24 feet wide with parking on the side, again, us getting emergency vehicles in and out of the project if we had an issue. The, I mentioned this before, but the way the entrance is set with a blind corner to the entrance to the project, that's the area where we actually do that speed monitoring. And there was a speed sign, there's been a speed sign put down there for years over by North pasture. And we also do the enforcement on the other side of the stop sign going which would be southbound. That blind corner with the speeds that we have monitored and recorded absolutely pose a concern to us with vehicles pulling out, if they can see or not see. Both ways coming up the hill would be a concern for us, and also come from the stop sign. So that's really what we have as far as our data, and then compiling that with what we have seen up there and what the plans are for the project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our police officer here?
Excuse me, Sergeant.
Sure.
Joseph Cubic for Concerned Citizens Group. I have a few questions for the sergeant.
Okay.
Sergeant, what was the maximum speed you clocked during that time period?
78 miles an hour.
And does that average speed include vehicles going slower than 25 miles per hour?
The average speed, yes. Includes everything going. It's just over, the average speed is the total vehicle count, yes.
So does the average include vehicles going less than 25 miles an hour?
It does.
Would that include the mail truck coming to a stop? Or a school bus coming to a stop?
It would.
Would that include the UPS vehicle coming to a stop to make a delivery?
It would, but everything under 10 miles an hour is actually not recorded in that data.
So between 10 and 25 miles per hour, those vehicles are recorded?
Those are recorded.
Whether or not they're slowing down to make a stop or pulling out of a driveway?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit a sergeant's report for the record. The next individual we have is Rene Basulto from Robson Forensic. He's going to talk about the interior flow and looking at emergency response, what the code requires under Connecticut law, and how the project does not meet the code. Pay particular attention to turning radius and emergency access. With that, I will let Mr. Basulto speak. And I'm giving you a copy of his report
Good evening. My name is Rene Basulto with Robson Forensic. I'm a professional engineer, registered professional engineer. I'm also a certified fire and explosion investigator and general contractor, among other things. I've been asked to review the site and the proposed project for safety concerns, life safety, not only of the occupants, but of the first responders to the site. There's, I've reviewed the drawings and analyzed the conditions being proposed, particularly the drives and access to the to the site and to each building. National Fire Protection Association develops different codes and standards. NFPA 1 is adopted by, the fire safety code is adopted by Connecticut Building Code. So it's part of the code. The code requires that access to buildings, requires that fire department access roads extend to within 50 feet of at least one exterior door that can be opened from the outside and that provides access to the interior of the building. The site in particular, from James Farm Road to the end of the drive is about approximately 550 feet, definitely requiring some type of access for emergency vehicles. They cannot serve the prop, any of the buildings, perhaps maybe the first one, but the rest of the buildings cannot be served from James Farm Road. So that would require an access road. The road or private drive that's being provided is 24 feet wide, which does meet the width requirements. However, the turning radiuses just to get into the property aren't even close to what's required. Turning radius of about 28 feet is required, interior turning radius of 28 feet. When you measure the turning radius at the entry of the development, you'll have an inside radius of 11 feet. That entry curve would have to be expanded considerably to accommodate any large vehicle, any fire apparatus vehicle to enter the facility would have to be accommodated. Once you're inside the development, the other turns, if you look, I don't know how familiar you are, but it has one main drive going in, it has another drive coming south, turning towards the west, and then another one turning to the north again, connecting to that main drive on top. These turning radiuses have an inside turning radius of five feet. You're not going to be able to turn a commercial vehicle, much less a fire apparatus, in that area. So there's no maneuverability for anything in there. So that's one of the things. The code also requires that dead ends of fire apparatus roads that dead end in 150 feet be provided with a turnaround. So if we were only to consider ignoring the fact that you can't access these buildings, if we were to consider just the first 12 buildings along that road, this road is in excess of 500 feet, definitely in excess of the minimum 150 feet, so you would need a turnaround, a dead end turnaround for fire apparatus. That's not being provided. Again, the turning radius, the lack of turning radius and the lack of accessibility prevents that from being an inadequate turnaround for any fire apparatus vehicle. And quite frankly, very difficult for any large vehicle to turn around in that area as well. Again, the minimum inside turning radius for any turnaround is 28 feet as well. I address the turning radiuses. The angle of approach, the code also requires a maximum angle of approach of 5% slope. That means that the street itself can only have, not have more than 5%. The terrain isn't that steep. There are, there is a section in here towards the middle where it does exceed the 5%. It's about a 6% slope. Not significant. Again, the authority having jurisdiction, the fire marshal has the authority to overlook this and override these things, and that threshold is very limited. Again, the first responders will do what they need to do to do what they're done. That's ingrained in their, in their training. They'll do and they'll overcome whatever obstacles they have to get to what they need to do. So a 1% increase is not going to make a difference, but it is in violation of the code. The other issue, NFPA 1 has, it says, obstructions and control of fire access roads. Requires roads to be kept clear of obstructions such as parked vehicles, fences, other barriers, dumpsters, excess vegetation, and so forth. However, it should be it should be understood that severe snow can also make these lanes temporarily inaccessible. Fire access road must, or the development must include some type of plan to maintain the access roads clear of inclement weather after a snowstorm. No plan has been provided to deal with severe snowstorms or inclement weather. The drawings don't show any location for snow storage areas. So that's another issue. As far as obstructions, I believe the officer mentioned, sergeant mentioned that there, the road is narrow. Even James Farm Road is narrow. These roads are only 24 feet wide. You will have cars parked. The driveways on each one of these buildings is only 15 feet wide, barely enough to fit two cars. And these are all three-bedroom houses. Anybody coming to visit any one of these homes will end up parking on the street. So you will end up, more likely than not, end up having a vehicle obstructing the traffic flow, preventing any emergency vehicles from entering. So I'm echoing the same concern the sergeant echoed with the flow within the development itself. The lack of adequate fire access roads to within 50 feet, again, that, the slope on the site, the fire access drive, dead ending, and lack of adequate turnaround. All these are conditions that violate the code and cause a serious health and safety risk to the occupants and to first responders. You have any questions? Be glad to address them. I try to keep it as brief as possible, I know it's late.
Any questions, Mr. Salaby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very intrigued about your discussion about the, what I would probably consider the increased risk to the folks that would live in that row. Those bottom four, and I'm trying to, I wish it was a little bit bigger, I can't take the ones right along the southern boundary, right there?
Right here.
Okay, so as I understand it, emergency apparatus would have a difficult time entering the development, but then it would have a further challenge once it got to those those little side streets, if you will, to get there. So there would actually be an increased risk for the people in there because it would be more difficult for a vehicle to get to them. Is that correct?
It, the way it's proposed, it's impossible for any emergency vehicle to get to that port.
Impossible.
At this point, there's a five-foot turning radius here. The emergency apparatus would have to get on top of the property. Once it's here, it has another five turn. Plus, this turn is more than 90 degrees. So it's very difficult for any vehicle, almost impossible for anybody to get back.
Probably have to plow through the houses to get there.
They'll find their way, they'll go on top of whatever they need to get to it, but it's extremely difficult. It is concerning.
I also want to note something I recall from one of the other developments, affordable housing developments that was done, it was before my time, actually. It's on this commission, and it's over on Chapel, between Chapel Street and Cut Spring Road. And I know for a fact that they have a secondary access road. It was gravelled over before, it's grassed now, but there's still a gate, and it says no access for, except for emergency vehicles. I've never seen it open, thank God, there's never been an incident, but it's a fairly dense community, such as what's proposed there. So you're saying that it's actually against a standard for there to not to be a secondary road access into a development such as this?
On the contrary, the standard does require a secondary access road. But it leaves it up to, the newer version of the code leaves it up to the authority of having jurisdiction, which would be the fire marshal. The only major reason I didn't bring it up is there's no way to put it in.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You can barely have the entrance here. That's... That's, that's the only width you have. But obviously, if you could get a secondary entrance and egress from the site, it, it would help. But there's no way to get it in there. That's a very good, very good observation. You're absolutely right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Any other questions from the commission? No, seeing none. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Is that here? I have it. Yeah. Yeah. I've asked Mr. Basulto to come back and show you what, if you look at the site and designed this properly in accordance with the NFP code, what it would look like.
The, let me get this here so I can, you can hear me. This, the red line shows what the 28 foot turning radius would be. It would, and the yellow that I've highlighted is part of the, already the curb, or, and in this case, part of the, the property for the homes. This would be a 28 foot turning radius in here. The curb is out in here right now. It's out in here right now. Once you come in here, you have the other obstructions here. This square for these two houses reduces significantly. These, if they were to leave those houses there, are left with hardly any property surrounding them. And this would be the 28 foot radius here and here for an adequate turnaround. And back in here, you end up with this turning radius as well. So there's, can it be done? Sure, but you're, not, not the way it is now. Those homes would have to be moved around. You, you end up losing a few of the, of the properties.
Where do you put the snow?
That's my question. Yes. That, this is just a, a, a possible solution to the turning radius. We're still left with a snow, we're still left with inclement weather, you're still left with vehicles parking on the 20 foot drive because there isn't enough parking in, in the facility. So, I mean, this is just one possible solution, just for the turning radius. We still have all the other issues that, that can't be resolved by this.
And then for, for sidewalks, I kind of just roughly scaled it out. It was, it was about 20 feet from the curb up to the garage.
It's about 19. I measured it out.
Average, average car is about 19, 18, 19 feet.
Right.
So if a car pulls in, noses up tight to the garage, it's going to be basically, its rear bumper is going to reach the curb.
On the sidewalk, yeah.
So anybody walking would have to walk around, walk off the sidewalk into the street, which would create another safety hazard.
And that, that's another concern I had. Actually, in my report, I didn't go through it, is the, the accessibility for, for ADA handicap. You need to have accessibility from the main road into the facilities, and nothing, at least nothing's laid out. And your observation is very good. It's, it's very difficult for anybody in, in a wheelchair or, or one of the mobile motorized wheelchairs to get around within that development as well, from the street, from public transit.
So they would need to like mandate all owners only have Mini Coopers, so they would have access to a sidewalk?
Right.
Thanks.
You can, you can do the development that way. Miami has a high rise that give you a unit with a Porsche. It's called the Porsche Building, but.
Nice.
It's free. You're paying 15 million for the unit, but the Porsche is free.
Thanks.
Sign me up. No, Mr. Salaby?
Just one additional question. This might be outside your area, but since we've been talking about fire safety and so on, and the, the risks to some of these areas, you know, when we do some of these, more of the condo type developments, yeah, I know one of the things that sometimes happens is that there's, there's, I don't know what the term is, like fire stops to make sure that if you had fire in one area, we prevent it from going, from spreading. With these houses spaced so very close together, closer than, you know, I mean, some of them, it's a matter of a small number of feet between the two of them, is there any statistical risk of having, of, you know, the fire being spreading from one area to another because of the proximity to these houses?
There, there is always a risk. And I see what you're referring to, some of them have about seven and a half feet between the homes. I have not, they haven't provided me with, with the floor plans. Usually what's required for that type of building is a fire rated exterior wall to prevent, to prevent.
Yes.
The fire from spreading. So I didn't make note of it because I'm, I'm assuming that, that it is a code requirement, assuming that at least that will be met. So you will have a two hour wall or, or between the, at each one of the, the exterior buildings. So it will prevent the, the spread, or at least hold off for, for the people to evacuate. It's, obviously won't prevent the spread from one to the other eventually.
Okay. Thank you.
We all set on questions? That's it?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, I would like to address, present to the commission a verified pleading in accordance with Section 22A-19 of the Connecticut General Statutes dealing with environmental intervenors, which allows the town to intervene into the proceeding. Further, as far as aggrievement, the town is an abutting property owner. The Stratford Fire Department has a station immediately to the east of Parcel 1, and so we're statutorily aggrieved also, but I wanted to make sure the record had our verified pleading under 22A-19. I'm also going to present the commission with a copy of REMA Ecological's report, and George Logan will come up momentarily to talk about his findings when he did a site visit to this location. Most important is while he was out on site, he found a new wetland. It's actually an old wetland, but he delineated, identified and delineated the wetland, which is actually behind the firehouse. And as a result of that, it's a mere 72, 73 feet from the eastern border of Parcel 1, which means the 250 foot upland review area. So what I'm pointing to now is what I'm going to call the intermittent water course. And the wetland comes off westerly towards the eastern border of Parcel 1 in this general area, which would move the upland review area from this boundary to a boundary somewhere in here, which then means that the conduct that's going to happen as a result of this proposed development is going to be clearly within the upland review area from the wetland that's been delineated here, necessitating a referral to the inland wetland commission. Further, with the discharge of stormwater across the street underneath James Farm Road, you have to be mindful of wetlands on the western side of the street, down gradient from where the, the water will be discharged. These are significant issues, and you'll also hear as to why in the upland review area, there should be no conduct and that it needs to be regulated because there are valuable trees and vegetation that are necessary to protect and maintain this environmental So with that, I'd like to introduce George Logan from REMA Ecological.
My name is, as you heard, George Logan. I'm Principal Environmental Scientist with REMA Ecological Services. We're out of Manchester, Connecticut. Just a little bit by way of my own background, I hold a master's degree in natural resources science, and I have certifications as a soil scientist, as a senior ecologist, and as a wetland scientist. So what I've done in my report, which has been submitted, and there's some more copies that are coming your way, myself and my associate, who's also a signatory on, on this letter, her name is Sigrid Godwa, she's also master degreed ecologist and botanist, we actually did not set foot on said site. What we did is we did a perimeter survey, and we particularly focused behind the fire station, as it was said, in this area. We expect that we were partially on the, on the fire station property and partially on the Orinoke Golf Club property. And what we located, as you will see it as the report comes around, I will turn your attention to figure 2A, which is a town of Stratford GIS slash Metro COG compilation. What it shows in yellow is the property boundary, which is approximately this. It also shows, again, this is a sketch map, this is not survey quality, but it does show you a distance, which I paced a couple of times, which is between 72 and 73 feet to said property boundary. The wetland was delineated, so if, if one goes out there, you will actually see a pink and blue markers that are alphanumeric from A0 to A9. This wetland sits slightly higher. It's poorly drained, and it sits slightly higher than the water course. We're calling this an intermittent water course. Technically, it is, probably more like a semi perennial stream. It has a watershed of about 38 or 40 acres, based on USGS. This is a forested little wetland. It, it's fairly good quality. It doesn't have invasives. It has native hydrophytes or plants that like wetland environments. And at the time, we had water within two or three inches of the surface, within about 30 to 40% of, of the delineated wetland. Now, if you turn back one figure, and by the way, we did go by a James Farm Road, and we've obviously found the catch basin that the discharge from the site would connect to. There's a catch basin across the street, and then obviously, there's a discharge. And by looking down, I did not enter that property. It's to me very obvious that our wetlands within 50 to 75 feet down there, which would again bring an upland review area from that system, 250 feet to overlap a section of the site. Figure 2 shows you the overall site, which is Parcel A2 and the existing house on James Farm Road. And what I've done there by using both Google Earth, which has some mapping tools, and also the GIS, town of Stratford GIS, which also has mapping tools, if you can see faintly underneath, you will see the topography. This is, I believe, a 2016 state topography. And I've delineated the watershed to what I'm calling Wetland A, which is that wetland, which is about 1,500 square feet before it connects to the, to the actual brook. The watershed is about, we'll call it between 1.32, 1.33 acres. And by looking at the site plans that were submitted, what we discovered was that a significant portion of the watershed to this wetland, what really drives this hydrology, is being diverted through the development to, to the west, to the other watershed. We estimated that it would divert up to 0.72 acres, which is about 54.5% of the watershed. This watershed actually drives the hydrology of that small wetland. Since it's above the water course, it's not really influenced by the water course itself. In these kinds of soils, which are till soils, what happens within the watershed, water percolates into the ground, meets somewhat more impervious surfaces, compacted, and it expresses itself in this wetland. So the idea is, without getting into too much into the weeds about how this happens, is that our contention is that by taking this much of a watershed, it's going to have a significant impact on the wetland, and it will drastically and adversely impact it. We also looked at, well, wait a minute, while I'm still here in this wetland, which again is in this general location, and you can almost see from, from this contour where it That's the lower portion, based on that contour, and it pretty much follows that. So not only is the watershed important, but also the buffer or the upland review area is highly important to maintaining the integrity, ecological integrity and functioning of that particular wetland. And of course, that has benefits to the brook itself. The other thing that we looked at, and again, I'm not going to go into any great detail because I think that's probably something that, if I'm understanding this correctly, there will be a referral to wetlands, and I'm sure the Wetlands Commission will have a few more questions of me, but just talking about impacts to the environment which wetlands are part of. We have a brook, which is Cemetery Palm Brook, which is in this general location in relation to the map. We have wetlands that are going through down to that particular water course. So this is within that watershed. So my concern here would be, are we doing proper stormwater quality mitigation so that we do not impact the water quality of a stream that, based on the mapping that the DEP has put together as a Class A water course? And also, we've had the chance back in 2018, myself and my, my colleague that I mentioned before, to check the water course and see that it's indeed a, a nice, fully functioning as far as aquatic habitat stream. So the idea here is, are we doing enough? Are we complying with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual, which is sort of the current bible, if you will, of what we need to do for mitigation to clean our water well enough? And of course, Stratford is an MS4 community, so that elevates it a little higher. And so I, I did note that there was a little bit of a discrepancy between what we saw on the maps, that were revised through 12319, and what we saw in the response to the applicants and, of the applicant's engineer to the town of Stratford Engineering Department. In that comment, there's a mention of a swale, there's a mention of two vortex devices, and an energy dissipator level spreader. None of these things we have found, and as has been previously mentioned on these plans. What we do find is we have a downstream defender, which is sort of a pre, pre treatment device before the below ground galleries, which are basically concrete vaults. And then with an ultra control structure which regulates the water, ties it into the catch basin, and then it goes across the street. The engineer, the applicant's engineer, said that the below ground galleries are primary treatment devices, or, and they're not, according to the manual, they're considered secondary treatment devices, and what is considered up, primary treatment devices are above ground, vegetated, devices, like detention basins, water quality swales. vegetated devices, like detention basins, water quality swales, rain gardens, and the like. And the reason for that is that there's certain processes that happen in these vegetated systems, which cannot happen in below-ground, which include a process such as volatilization, microbial degradation, which obviously is obvious for thalysis, and plant uptake and others. What I've included in, as part of this submission, and again, I don't want to get into too much technical here, but there's six tables that we provided that show you that, for instance, of very large, so this table 1, 1A, 2, 3, 4, and 5, that a very large proportion of runoff constituents, and this is kind of something that happens here in the northeast, is soluble constituents. Even metals, heavy metals, which are toxic to the environment, a large proportion of those, as you can see from the tables, are, really cannot be taken out by mechanical means, so they just flow through the system. So the downstream defender, or even Vortex devices, which I haven't found yet, they are similar in the way they work, are mechanical devices. And we found some literature, for instance, on downstream defender that says that, yes, there's TSS removal, by the way, total suspended solids is sort of a surrogate, if you do good total suspended solid removal on an annual basis, your concomitant removal of other things is usually higher, so we focus on that. But it says that it does 90 percent of TSS removal, but for particles at 150 microns or larger. So what's that? That means that anything that's less than that is not taken out as well, and that includes fine sand, very fine sand, silt, and clay, which is the predominance of total suspended solids to which pollution is absorbed. So that's the stuff we need to take out. Long story short, this system as proposed does not look at low-impact development, doesn't look at above-ground primary systems, it would not do a good job in cleaning the water that leaves the site, and therefore, our conclusion would be that it would have an adverse impact downstream. That is my basic synopsis of this report, and I'll be welcoming any questions that you might have at this point.
Do we have any questions from the commissions? Mr. Henrich?
When Mr. Casey was up, he had talked about a blue line that went through the property about two-thirds of the way back, in regards to the pitch of the property or the elevations of the property?
I'm not sure where that is, maybe the...
So basically, if I understood it correctly, half the property would drain into the wetlands? So you had about three, four buildings up, you had that blue line going through?
Oh, there's the blue line, exactly.
The natural slope of the land puts there, this part goes to the base, this set goes there.
So currently, the property drains in both directions, towards the back and towards James Farm, to the right and to the left? And with the wetlands there, if the elevations weren't changed, then the natural grade of the water would run the, any runoff into the wetlands?
That's correct, but what has happened is that you see the mass of impervious surfaces, including the roofs, all the roofs, the driveways, and some of the areas between the buildings are being shed towards the road, picked up by the stormwater management system, and shunted that way. And I think there's about, my calculation, about 26,000 to 27,000 square feet of impervious surfaces that for sure is going the other way. And that's why I said up to 0.72 acres. I can't really exactly tell from the grading, but this, you know, this little square here, with this line, is 0.72 acres.
But you're still going to have runoff from the upper, the top edge, where the roof lines run to their backyard, into the wetlands, as well as the backs of the two properties that are on the property line to the right, just because of the natural pitch, those are going to...
My understanding is that the roofs go into the drainage system.
Yeah.
So all the impervious surfaces go into the drainage system.
You think that it'll all be picked up?
If there's a whole site, it just goes out to the row and to the...
And as a matter of fact, that's what the engineer himself said. He said 123,000 some square feet, which is exactly what you see here, goes that way. That's the way it was calculated.
So the belief is that all the, none of the runoff would make its way to the wetlands?
There might be some, but I think it's minimal of that 0.72 acres, a minimal percent. Probably will find itself maybe from back here, possibly from back here, but the rest of it is going to be discharged this way. And again, it's very, very difficult. What I, that's why I made the dual calculation, realizing that all the impervious surfaces are collected and shunted to the west. I said up to 0.72 acres.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question or two of the witnesses?
Sure.
Thanks, I'll be real short.
Okay.
I just wanted to be clear, I'm not sure I heard you. When you were testifying as to your belief of wetlands that are on the Orinoke Golf Course, did you do soil boring samples on that property, on the Orinoke property?
I did soil borings a few, both on the Orinoke property and also on the town property, which is, because again, the wetland kind of is on both sides of that northern property boundary.
And how many of the, how many test borings did you do on Orinoke?
On Orinoke, probably three.
Three. And are they located on a survey map? Did you have them surveyed, or did you flag it?
No, that's not a necessary protocol for soil scientists delineating wetlands.
Okay. So is your testimony then, that you can accurately depict how much of the wetlands are on the Orinoke property, just by your eye, or on those three core samples?
No, I delineated the wetlands, so I did enough soil samples to realize, okay, this is where the wetland is, and then I delineated by putting the flags. And if you look at...
But it's not surveyed, it's not surveyed, so we don't know...
It's not surveyed, I've mapped it, I haven't surveyed it, but the flags are out there, and they probably should be surveyed. I guess what I wanted to say is that I do have some photos that I thought were included here. Sorry, I was looking for the photographs that I made. Oh, okay. So photo number eight, oh, as a soil scientist, I always want to show a photo of soil, right? Dirt is good. So here it is, and any soil scientist would look at this and realize that that's a profile of a wetland, a poorly drained soil. So this is a Lyster Soil Series, I didn't put that in the report, but it's a poorly drained soil. And I welcome anyone that wants to go out there as a certified soil scientist to verify my work.
But it's not delineated on this map, you can't tell us where it is.
I said it was 70, the closest point is 72 to 73 feet from the property boundary, which is obviously there's some stakes and there's some pipes and so on.
Thank you, I have no further questions. You're welcome.
Mr. Logan, Kevin Kelly for the record, before you leave, did the applicant delineate any wetlands for the application, or do any research in the application submitted to the commission, looking at potential wetlands within 250 feet of any little spot on the subject property?
No, they did not. There was no recent information, there was not a certification by a soil scientist saying, I've cleared the area of wetlands and I've cleared within 250 feet. There's a reference map, number one, that shows the water course, and that's from an old map that I'm not even sure how accurate that is. So there's no delineation even from that old map that was ever done.
Mr. Logan, the map that Attorney Bellis referenced, can you state for the record who prepared that map?
That map was provided by Rose Tissot and Company, which is the applicant's engineering architectural consultant.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Solhavy?
Mr. Chairman, sir, could you, okay, with the newly discovered wetland, yeah, there. So in just layman's terms, what are the main, what are the potential threats to that wetland by the development that's proposed? Is it contamination? Is it disturbing it, eliminating? What's the simple threats to this particular wetland?
The major effect, which is a physical, so in wetlands parlance, we always look at potential physical impacts. It's the, the major one is the diverting of a large proportion of the watershed away from it, and that's going to de-water it and basically destroy its wetland character. Additionally, you know, by taking the water, there's other things that happen. There's large trees here that are providing function in the upland, they're providing function to the wetland, and some of them are red oaks. And red oaks like their feet to be moist, so their roots are within the water, and they derive the minerals from the groundwater regime, and so that's a bit of a problem. They will have a change on the upland vegetation also by denying this water.
And I ask also, this is somewhat speculative, but the strip of land that you see beyond the eastern border of the development and the town, so that strip right there, previous years, we've seen other applications come through there, so I mean, there would be potential that somehow that might be the subject of further development, we don't know, it may stay fallow, but if there were further development, would this exacerbate some of the dangers that would be to this particular wetland area?
They would. And again, every, every application needs to be looked at thoroughly and properly, and proper mitigation needs to be counted, and proper distances that protect the wetland and the water course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Kelly for the record, once again, that concludes the town's presentation. We, the town, believes that there has been substantial evidence provided this evening from our experts, which demonstrate that this project has problems and issues that go right to the issues of health and safety and substantial public interest like the environment. What you've heard is that the stormwater management system will take all the water off parcel two, which is over 50 percent of the watershed that hydrates the wetland, and move the water west under James Farm Road and closer to wetlands on that side of the street, which were not delineated by the applicant. You also heard from George Logan that we found a wetland based on wetland soils in the field that have now shifted the upland review area into the site where they have proposed conduct, which will directly and adversely not only impact the wetland resource, but also result in conduct within the upland review area, necessitating a referral to the inland wetland commission. You also heard from Rene Basulto with regards to emergency response and the problems that this site have with regards to that. Particularly, the entrance is not wide enough, the fire lanes were not delineated, and because of the length of the dead end, we didn't have the adequate code construction, so it violated the NFPA code on a number of issues with regards to dead end design, lack of fire access roads, slope of the site, and obstruction, particularly with regards to removal of snow, there's no place for snow storage. Lastly, with regards to traffic, the sight line is only 120 feet. Pay particular attention to Tim Casey and STV's traffic study in the intersection sight map. The average speed that Sergeant Albon stated was 36.8 miles. At 38 miles per hour, you need 410 feet in order to safely enter a road, and the sight line is only 120. So it's going to be very dangerous, it's going to require vehicles to lurch out further in, from the driveway out toward the street, which is a hazardous situation. So having put that in the record, we believe that there's enough evidence for the commission to deny the application. And under 8-30G, there is a burden shift, and the commission has to handle that burden on appeal, and there's a balancing act. First, we have to make sure that the evidence was substantial, and we believe it is with the experts that were provided. Second, you need to demonstrate that it was for health and safety or a substantial public interest. Obviously, first response and traffic safety are important as far as straightforward health and safety issues, but as to the environment, that's the other public interest that needs to be protected here. And then you have to look at, does this outweigh the need for affordable housing? And the facts are that here in Stratford, we do have a history of approving affordable housing developments, where they're warranted and where there are site that are actually conducive to this type of development. The history includes Shakespeare Estates, Cut Spring Village, Otis Street, Avalon Bay Communities, 3044 Main Street, Long Brook Station. In 2001, the town of Stratford had 8.22 percent of its housing stock deemed affordable under the restrictive definition of the Connecticut 8-30G definition. In 2006, that number dropped from 8.22 to 4.82.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin, we have some people back who think they're meeting outside, who would be your speaker?
Thank you. In 2006, that number, 8.22, was reduced to 4.82 because both Stony Brook Co-op and Success Village paid off federal loans and therefore were no longer part or included in the 8-30G definition, despite the fact that as a cost, the rental cost, the units remained the same price. They remained affordable, but under state definition, no longer qualified under 8-30G. Be that as it may, since 2006, Connecticut has, or not Connecticut, Stratford has increased from 4.82 to 6 percent, a 25 percent increase in the past 10 years. If we added back in the Success Village and the Stony Brook Co-ops, we would be in the neighborhood of nine and a half percent, approaching the 10 percent threshold. When we look at census statistics, and what I'm going to provide the commission are census statistics from 2018, of the 20,000 houses in Stratford, 11,000 pay less than 30 percent of their household income toward housing, and that is the normal customary threshold that you look at as to whether something is affordable or not. So from a market perspective, the U.S. Census, that means that almost 56 percent of housing in Stratford is affordable. May not meet the 8-30G strict requirements, but it does demonstrate that from a household budget perspective, Connecticut is, Stratford is an affordable town. And I think that that's an important component to keep in the back of your minds when you look at the health and safety risks, as well as your stewardship of the environment, that with the fact that we have affordability in our community, we don't have to turn a blind eye to that in order to enable this type of development because we do have affordability. With that, we'll wrap it up. If you have any questions...
Do we have any questions for Mr. Kelly? You got off the hook easy tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Cubic, do you need a minute or two to set up?
Pardon me?
Do you need a minute or two to set up?
No.
We can take a, okay?
I'm good. Joseph Cubic of Harlow Adams and Friedman, law firm in Milford. I reside at 1350 James Farm Road. I represent Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford and, well, the neighbors. And some preliminary matters, I'd like to submit two, two originals of our verified pleading, a 22A19 pleading. And as Attorney Kelly has already told you, it requires that you consider environmental issues when you make your decisions in this matter. Next is the original petition in opposition, signed by a whole bunch of Stratford citizens. And I have a copy for the record as well. And it states that we, the undersigned, are in opposition to the applications and petitions of Rogelus LLC pending before the town of Stratford zoning commission to construct 25 units at 1180 James Farm Road and 170 Orin Oak Lane, seeking affordable housing. The next document is what we call the protest petition. I think you've, you're familiar with this now, following the 795 James Farm Road applications. So this protest petition is signed by, except for one, one, one household, all of the property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. I only need 20%. I've got them all, except for one. And what this means is that when this commission takes a vote on a zone change, three out of, three out of five votes isn't going to do it. You need a supermajority pursuant to the statutes and the regulations cited in the protest petition. I've also included attached to the protest petition documents I received from the tax assessor's office showing the bubble, the 500-foot radius around the subject properties. And those properties correspond with the addresses that are on the protest petition. So we contend that, I know the planning commission has returned an unfavorable as to the zone change, but we contend this as well requires a supermajority vote for the zone change to be approved. You need four votes in favor of zone change. And I'm going to submit the original and a copy. Now, before I, before I present, I'd like to first introduce the chairman of the Roosevelt Forest Commission. The chairman of the Roosevelt Forest Commission is well aware of the environmental issues that impact the forest, and he's well aware of these water coming, proposed to come from 1180 James Farm Road, through a culvert into another culvert, and then a discharge pipe onto my, part of what was used to be owned, property owned by my family, into a wetlands area that has always been wet, just, just down the hill from the property. And that water leads to Cemetery Brook that you've learned about from 795 James Farm Road, and eventually leads to the pond of Roosevelt Forest. Mr. David?
Hello, Mr. Chair. My name is Robert David. I live at 210 Pumpkin Ground Road in Stratford. I'm the chairman of the Roosevelt Forest Commission. I'd just like to say that we're concerned with the runoff of the development, proposed development into the Roosevelt Forest, into the waterways and disturbing the detrimental effects to all the wildlife and the forest itself. I want to make it clear, stewards of the forest, it's our obligation to protect the forest, and we believe this development is in such a danger to us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So now we'll start our presentation, and we have one expert to call today, Mr. Richard Esick, a professional engineer. You've met Mr. Esick throughout the 795 James Farm Road applications. Mr. Esick's going to give his presentation.
Do you have copies of your report? Yes, I have. Hand them to you. You got it. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Richard Esick. I live at 570 James Farm Road. It's approximately one-third of a mile south of the intersection of James Farm Road and Orin Oak Lane. As part of my review, I took a look at the submitted preliminary site engineering design report, the traffic impact study report, and the plans that were submitted by the applicant. My initial general observation of what was submitted is that the applicant kind of cherry-picked the information that he submitted. He submitted what you, what he wanted you to hear, but he disregarded what you, he didn't want you to hear. And I'm here to tell you what he didn't want you to hear. I looked at it in respect to two, two design aspects that are, that are very important, and the applicant simply ignores. And the first one is constructability. I'm a professional engineer. I've been performing engineering for over 40 years. And in my career, we always look at constructability on any project. We look at how will the project be constructed? What impact will the construction have on the, on the surrounding community? Construction duration? What is the construction duration time and so forth? These are all valid questions that need to be answered, and they haven't been answered. So for this project, the impact to the community during construction is problematic due to the developers' need to construct a sanitary sewer, water, and gas main within the public travelway, and will put the public safety at risk. The applicant states in his traffic impact study, section six conclusion, quote, "Area traffic operation was analyzed for the construction of 25 houses. The development is expected to produce negligible traffic impact on area roadways and intersections." That statement is false. The construction of 25 houses under this proposal requires the construction of approximately 600 linear feet of sanitary sewer along James Farm Road and another 930 linear feet of sanitary sewer along Orin Oak Lane. This construction will take place just downstream from the Stratford Fire Department Engine Company Four Fire Station located at 200 Orin Oak Lane. Sewer construction down the middle of both James Farm Road and Orin Oak Lane requires, well, let me just, let me just paint a picture for you of what sewer construction would look like. First of all, sewers are generally placed in the middle of the road. In fact, the town, that's a requirement for the town. So in order to construct the sewer, the sewer has to be a minimum four feet deep. A water main has to be a minimum five feet deep. So we'll have an excavator sitting, straddling the middle of the road, digging the trench. Next to that excavator will be a dump truck, which will be receiving the spoil that's coming out of the, out of the trench. Once the, once that truck with the spoil leaves, then you'll have to have auxiliary equipment come in to ferry in the pipe and the various hardware and so forth. Once the pipe is laid, well, he also has to bring in bedding material too, bedding material and the pipe. Once the pipe is laid, that equipment leaves, and now we have to have a dump truck come back with the backfill material for the, for the excavated trench. Then you have to have pavement reconstruction performed. All this takes place, there is no possible way that traffic can be maintained on either of these roadways during the construction of that sewer. Furthermore, it's, it's an OSHA regulation. That traffic cannot pass within six feet of a drop-off more than six inches without it being protected. So there is no way that the construction of the sewer, the water main, the gas main can be constructed without a detour. This is particularly disturbing to me because, living at 570 James Farm Road, I'm downstream from firehouse number four, 200 Orin Oak Lane. I'm downstream, and probably half the audience here is downstream, and Two Schools Chapel and Flood are also downstream. Now, the detour route would most likely take you through Orin Oak Lane to the intersection of Main Street, past Sikorsky Airport Plant, past the interchange with, with the Merritt Parkway, up Putney Main, up Chapel to James Farm Road. Probably adding, well, depending upon the time of day, you're adding precious minutes to any kind of emergency that may exist downstream from, from this construction. So given that, I would ask each one of you commissioners to consider, would you accept this risk in exchange for 25 units of housing? I would ask Mr. Bellis the same question. Would he accept this risk for 25 units of housing? I certainly wouldn't. I don't think the people here that live downstream from that fire station would accept that risk either. So it's absolutely paramount that the applicant's engineer address this most critical issue. It's important to note that without the inclusion of this information from the applicant's engineer, it makes the submitted traffic impact study and its failure to consider this public safety issue during construction unacceptable. Another aspect of this design that I'd like to touch upon is sustainability, sustainability of design. So what do I mean by sustainability of design? It means that a project of this nature has a service life of 75 years. So that means that 75 years is about 27,000 days. So what that means is that on day 27,000, the, the engineered facilities have to perform as designed the same day as day one. So typically, a responsible engineer would introduce extra capacity in his design to account for degradation and other uncertainties that most certainly will occur over the service life of his design. This is not the way the applicant submitted to the town his design. I'll give you an example. The applicant's stormwater drainage provides 11,215 cubic feet of storage capacity, and that compares to 11,132 cubic feet of storage capacity that is demanded by a 100-year storm frequency. Those are his numbers, not mine. A comparison of the capacity versus demand shows that demand is at 99.2% of the capacity. So virtually, there is no extra capacity in his storage system. At the same time, the applicant states on sheet SP2, Gallery Inspection and Maintenance Plan, Note Number One, galleries are to be inspected every 12 months and vacuumed if sediment depth is greater than 12 inches. So what he's saying is that he can allow 12 inches of sediment in his storage system, which would reduce the volume available by 10%, which would mean that he doesn't have the storage available for a 100-year storm, and he says that's acceptable. Can safely be stated, oh, by the way, he says, to that respect, he says in his preliminary site engineering report, he says, quote, "It can be safely stated that flows from the proposed system will produce peak flows of less than the existing peak flows to the west of the site." Again, a false statement. I'll give you another example, too, of sustainability. So the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, it's commonly known as NOAA, that's an agency with the U.S. Department of Commerce, and they're charged with collecting rainfall data and publishing precipitation frequency estimates. And these are the numbers that are used by drainage engineers to come up with their, with their drainage design. So the initial data was published in, was published and released in 1961. That was data that was collected through the 50s. They've been collecting data ever since, and what they've realized now is that the data needs to be revised. So in 2015, they published NOAA Atlas 14, which updated these prescription, these precipitation frequency estimates and compared them to 1961 data. And what they found is that in Connecticut, in this state, they're seeing a one to nearly two-inch increase in the 24-hour, 100-year storm rainfall amount. So just to be a little more specific, in 1961 for Stratford, Connecticut, that, that rainfall amounted to seven inches of rainfall for a 24-hour, 100-year storm. When you look at the 2015 data, that number jumped to 8.35 inches of rainfall, which is a 19% increase over 54 years. So NOAA associates this increase in rainfall precipitation to climate change and recommends monitoring the NOAA website for periodic updates to install to rainfall rates as more data is collected. So responsible design engineers are responding to NOAA's recommendation. In particular, a sustainable project, having a service life of 70 years, 75 years, would increase total rainfall data by a minimum of 15% to account for the uncertainty and the likelihood that rainfall data will increase over time. The applicant's design provides no such approach to accommodate this important fact. And finally, when it goes to sustainability, I'll just add one more, one more issue. And by the way, I prepared a letter basically outlining what I just spoke to, and I'll submit this as, for the record. And I just want to bring out one more fact that nobody's mentioned tonight either. So the applicant's proposal is for a pump station to service 25 household units. So this would be a private pump station located on private property to pump sewage to, to a town, an existing town sewer line. So I have an article here that was published in the Connecticut Post in April of 2000, April 17th, 2016. And basically, what it says is that municipalities with their pump stations are having a tremendous problem with sanitary wipes, the baby wipes and the household wipes that we all use to wipe our counter after dinner or whatever. And those wipes are not intended to be flushed down the toilet. They do not disintegrate, however, people are doing that. And what happens is, these things are, are jamming up the municipal pumps and wrecking havoc on their system. I have copies of that article, and it even mentions the town of Stratford, which is also has this problem. Even grinder pumps, which are installed in these pump stations, are not doing the trick. They simply can't grind these sanitary wipes that are being flushed down the toilet. So I think it's important to note that having a private pump station on this private property that's not served by a municipality, there is no 24-hour, seven-day-a-week on-call public works people that could come and service it. If those sanitary wipes clog that pump, the pump fails, you've got 25 households that have no sewage, they cannot, no toilet usage, no, no, no showers, no water usage. That is a real health problem. It's not addressed. So I'll, I'll submit copies of that post article as well, so you can, you can read it yourself if you have a problem with. And that basically is what I have to say about the, about the applicant's submission.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? I don't see any at the moment. Thank you.
In fact, just, just make one more observation as well. I've been, I've been told by, by the Sikelsky family that ledge is encountered at the entrance of their driveway at James Farm Road, which is where the sewer line, water line, and gas line would all be entering the property. Again, that's an issue that's not addressed by the applicant, but if there is ledge there and they have to blast through that ledge, very problematic for, for everybody. Thank you.
Joseph Cubic, again, for the Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford. In your, in your package, you would have received a copy of an authorization signed by Michael Sikelsky for Rogelus LLC to bring this petition before you. Michael Sikelsky owns 1180 James Farm Road. The other parcel that is part of 170 Orin Oak Lane is owned by Rogelus, I'm sorry, owned by Bluebird Prestige Inc., which is a separate entity. I'm going to submit the tax card and some copies. Tax card establishes that Bluebird Prestige LLC is the owner of the property. Also, in your package, you would have received a copy of the survey submitted that states that Bluebird Prestige owns 170 Orin Oak Lane. There's no authorization in the, that I saw in the file for the applicant to bring an application for property owned by, by Bluebird Prestige. The deed for 1180 James Farm Road, two deeds. First deed is a quitclaim deed from, and they're stapled together, quitclaim deed from, I'll submit these copies. Quitclaim deed from Richard Sikelsky to Michael Sikelsky, his son, but Richard Sikelsky retained a life use in the property for himself and his wife, Jean. Jean was his second wife. The property was quitclaimed to Michael Sikelsky. Michael is Jean Sikelsky's stepson. Jean Sikelsky lives in the house. She is utilizing her life use in the property. I also have the tax card for, the tax card for 1180 James Farm Road. Also establishing, you can see on it, it establishes that Jean has a life use in the So a life use means you can live in the property as long as you meet certain requirements until you... until you no longer want to live in the property. Jean Sikelski is older, but she certainly is very healthy and could be with us for a very long time. One, I don't see an authorization from Jean Sikelski to bring this petition. And I certainly haven't seen any documents stating that she's, in any way, released the, the life use. If she's released the life use or signed a quitclaim deed, they ought to produce a document because they will not have a right to build out this proposal as long as Jean wants to live in that house. So show us the document. The next letter is, next document, is a letter that Richard Sikelski, he passed away, ooh, six, seven, eight, six years ago. Can't remember exactly. But, you know, he was a longtime resident on James Farm Road. I've known him since I was a kid. He was, knew our family very well. This is a letter from Richard Sikelski to the Stratford Zoning Board in two thousand and eight, opposing project, proposed projects on one seventy Orin Oak Lane. The concerns were wells, the concerns were contamination in the area. You may or may not know, and I think it's in the Health, Health Department's report, that about fifteen years ago, or about fifteen years ago, ten to fifteen years ago, it was discovered that MTBE volatile substances, gasoline, had leaked from tanks and had polluted lots and lots of wells in the area. One of the concerns is, by changing the hydrology of this property, what will be the impact on the wells on the, in the location? Well, Richard Sikelski was very much opposed to the project that eventually became an eleven-unit-approved project for one seventy Orin Oak Lane. So I spoke, I just happened to have the chance to speak with Michael Sikelski. Michael admitted that if my father knew what I was doing, he'd be rolling in his grave. He said it a whole bunch of times. I had the conversation with Michael on Monday, in fact, in front of Jay Hibansky. You know, he happened to be in the zoning office as I walked by. He admitted he's doing it for the money. They're willing to pay him a substantial amount more for the property than it's worth. How could he be bringing such a petition before this board if he didn't have the release of the life use? Now, we have no, not documentation from Jean Sikelski that she's releasing the life use. Michael Sikelski told me that he has a deal with Nick Owen for the property. I said, are you sure that's who you're dealing with? And he kept saying it over and over again, I got this deal with Nick Owen. Show us that document. So we don't have an authorization from Jean Sikelski. She's an elderly woman who could be facing getting, being forced out of her house that she has a right to live in for the rest of her life. There's something going on. We don't have enough information about that. Okay. I'll leave that alone.
Hold on, Mr. Cubic. Mr. Solhavy has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cubic, I find this interesting. Can you please explain? So the property is owned by whom?
Oh, okay. Michael Sikelski, when, it was quitclaim to Michael Sikelski. Michael Sikelski then immediately after quitclaimed the property to a trust, the Michael Sikelski Family Trust. So it's Michael Sikelski Family Trust that's the owner. In fact, the trust hasn't given you authorization, has it?
But is the property able, able to be sold as long as somebody still has one of these life uses on it? They have to, I'm just, legally, they would have to release their claim in order for the sale to be complete?
I believe the property could be sold, but it's subject to a life use.
So that even if it was sold, they would still have the, the right to remain on the property even if the land was transferred to somebody else? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you take the property subject to a life use if you buy, if you choose to buy it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to change our topic. There's been a lot of discussion about affordable housing in Orin Oak. Some people call it the North End. Some people call it the North, North End. I call it Orin Oak. We got a lot of affordable housing in Orin Oak. And I'll give you a packet share of some documentation from various units for sale in Orin Oak. You're all, I'm sure, aware, but I don't think necessarily the applicant's folks here are aware of Farm Mill Condominium Association that has three hundred and eighteen units. You'll see some pricing for some bedroom units. There's Tudor Ridge Condominium that's extremely affordable, that has a hundred and forty units. Those tend to be one or two bedroom units. Farm Mill tends to be two or three, three bedroom units. And just the pricing, you look at any tax card, they are by far very affordable units in Orin Oak. So there's no block for people living in Orin Oak just because you don't have a lot of money. And I have a map that goes along with that, showing the, the location of Farm Mill, Tudor Ridge. There's also Orin Oak Shores, which is forty units. That's not quite as affordable. And Orin Oak Village Condominium Association that has nearly a thousand units. All right. So I'd like to get to traffic now, and Jim, could you?